Order where our budget workshop will start now with department heads.
Okay, basically, we wanted to remind you of budget concerns we have starting today. This is even before we get into the details of the budgets. We have inflation and insurance. We all know that insurance has been going crazy in Florida. That will affect us. We all know inflation is a problem. That's going to push up prices of our supplies and stuff. So that's something we got to look at as we go through the process. We have to complete the first. We're completing the first year of animal enforcement. And there may be some things that we did not account for. Obviously, for our second year, we'll have to account for consolidated nine one dispatch. We budgeted for three quarters of a year. Next year, you'll have a full year of consolidated dispatch. In talking to, to, we hope. Talking to Butler, he seems to think he's hoping by the end of May, maybe middle of June, they'll finally have all the bugs worked out. So we're still moving forward with consolidated dispatch. But that means we'll have more salary money than we had that we didn't have this year that we'll have next year. EMS, we talked about it earlier. The annual three million that we always set aside for repaving projects. We are committed to doing that. That's your policy. Utility authority, as you know, we're moving into a utility authority. So there may be some expenditures that we have to identify that you are not aware of at this point. So that will be an impact on your budget. New capital projects and existing projects, any projects. And Kevin's been doing a great job trying to get these projects cranked out and finished and completed. But any projects we haven't completed and or any new projects, and you know, people always bring up new projects. We need to worry about how do we fund them if we can fund them. And then finally, the RFP for the auditor services, we're going to have a new contractor for the audit. We don't know what that price will be yet. So that'll have an impact on our budget as well. Could be more. I doubt it would be less. But the auditor selection committee will make a recommendation to this board on which direction to go in. And that will have a financial consequence. So we just wanted to remind people that, you know, we have budget issues out there. It's not just a blank slate. And this is just our first chance to let our departments talk to you about what they think their needs are going to be next year. Having said that, every year we talk about the budget calendar and people, this is more for the public than the board. The board already knows this, want to know when things fall into place. So in May, we have our first two budget workshops. In June, we'll get the preliminary tax rule from the property appraiser, preliminary tax rule. In addition, we're going to have a budget workshop on January 20th to discuss the MSBUs, the concept for an MSTU municipal taxing unit that would help fund law enforcement, our assessments and, you know, fire assessment, garbage assessment. All those things will be at that work session to see which direction the board wants to go in. And then also we'll begin receiving the budgets from the constitutional officers in June. In July, the property appraiser has to say, here is the certified roles. So that's the beginning of where we find out what we have next year to spend. So he will tell us how much we're going to get certified in adware assessments on July 1st. And that begins what's called truth and milage and the whole truth and milage process. You'll also have a notice to adopt through our intent for a uniform method of assessments for all of your assessment programs, including the ones for the new subdivisions that are coming in that we just last year adopted an ordinance that said we're going to do assessments on all the new subdivisions. You'll also pass a preliminary special assessment rate resolutions. So every single one will have to come before you for you to pass it, to pass their rates. You'll have to set the proposed mileage rate in July, early August. You got 35 days from July 1st to do that. So you will have to set what your mileage rate is, what the rollback rate is, and set your hearing dates. Fifty five days after trim, after the certification, the trim notices get sent out to the public. So that tells you that. In August, you're going to have more budget workshops. You get the outside agencies and the capital projects because in August, that is the month we have to get the budget finalized. September 5th is your first hearing on the budget. It's your final hearing on the first hearing on the budget and the mileage rates. It'll also be your final hearing on the special assessments. So you have the preliminary hearing on the special assessments in August, final hearing at that first meeting in September. Then we run a trim ad. That's where it says, you know, what the budget is going to be. And on September 19th, you'll have your final hearing on the mileage rates and budget. That's when everything gets set to the state. So you will be really, really busy from the middle of July through all of August because that's when you'll know what all the revenue projections are. About the middle of the month is when we start getting the state revenues and all those projections in. So that's kind of the direction we're going at. If you need any additional workshops, please let us know and we'll schedule them. But that is the tentative budget calendar. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to whoever is first. Who's first?
Hold on, hold on, David. Before you, with your spiel you just made, I mean, and this is a workshop, and I wish we would have changed that because I'm going to ask the board or the direction they would like for you to go in preparing the budget. So this workshop, so we can't vote on it, but I want the consensus of this board on the direction that I, I, I hope we would go to, to present a budget. Board, when we, we look at the budget, the first thing that should, 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 should come off the revenue that if projected to come in is those things that we cannot control. Call increases in, in insurance, things that out of our control that has to be increased. That should come off first. So if you got a hundred dollars, that come off a hundred dollars first. The next thing, and I'm asking this board for a consensus on this. I don't know what, I think the state did three or five percent increase in their employees. Do we want to match what the state done with, with employees, increase in payroll? Now consensus that we do that?
Yeah. What'd you say was three and a half?
Ever what they, ever what they, they, they did for their employees. What was it, David?
I think it's five percent.
How much?
Five?
Five percent?
Whatever.
I mean, that definitely ought to be our goal.
Yeah, that's our consensus for our goal.
Yeah, as a goal.
That's consensus for our goal. So we got everything that's, that's not on our control, taking care of first. The next would be county employee, that's everybody employee, ever what that is, three percent, five percent, that's what we want to work toward. Then we go from there with the rest of the budget. That fair enough?
That is.
I think that's a fair notion, Chair, to, because as you said, with retirement issues and stuff, it's totally out of our control. That's what we're, we're brought forth. But if I may, Chair, you know, being here almost eight years, I've paid attention to different things as relevant to everything that what benefits the taxpayer. And you know, me and Kirby had a discussion here a little while back, and I, I kind of pick up on a few things that we, we talk about out of control. It's not, we have no control on the cost of what it takes to put asphalt down, do this, do that. And I would ask this board, just to keep it in the back of your mind, you know, here we are, each year we're committed, as David said, three million dollars a year for our paving projects. We're 90 million in the old people. I would, I would ask each one of the board members to do your homework, pay real close attention. I think it's, it's time that we increase that number. Because when you sit here and look at the, and I command each and every one of you, if it wasn't for DOT helping us, we'd probably tar and feather. Because, you know, what I know, you know, I put off this, this, and this project to make sure that I've got enough. I mean, Kevin sat in there the other day and we did our math and, you know, I got about $500,000 left over, so I know what to do with that. But this, this, this all takes place in two and a half years, you know? And so each, you know, you're talking $600,000 a year. It don't go very far. So just, let's, let's, just consider it, you know? And if you have the questions, I'm sure Kevin can share with you. The answers, I think it's time that we really need to take that in deep consideration. And wherever it comes from, we, I think the increase of at least a million dollars needs to go forth because you don't get much sick on the grant no more. I hate to say it, you know?
We've been.
It's truth, truth.
And, and, and the eighty million dollars you're talking about winning the hole is not new construction.
Oh, no, 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 no.
It's just taking care of what we got paved now.
Exactly.
We've been very fortunate over the past few years to get a lot of grant funding for roads. And I can't guarantee that'll always be the case.
Well, me and Kevin had a little big discussion this morning. You know, we went through that big bad rain here, what was it, month and a half ago or what have you? And guess what? As it dries out, it's a pile, it's a pile, it's a pile. I got scalded last night by my granddaughter because she hit a pile on 252. And I said, that's Everett side. It wasn't my side. You call Everett.
Okay, well, you, you, you see the direction the board want to go.
Absolutely.
And that's for everybody. They know what they're going, what, what, what increasing in their, increasing their salary going to be as far as the percentage we're going to up it. Things not on our control that we have no control over, we got to take care of that. So, so that, that's, that's your foundation to start your budget.
And we're anticipating it to be very challenging this year.
Okay. All right. Animal control, Tom?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As David was saying, this is a brand new department and some unexpected numbers. I would have never dreamed that here we are, seventh month would have been yesterday. We're at 791 cases. We've been took 473 animals. We had 87 after hour calls. And we've had 700, or 3,048 calls already.
How many?
3,048 calls. So we kind of, for our budget here, we're asking for another $18,260. What they're for is, I'll just go right to it. For the professional services, I never budgeted for Facebook. I did not know there was a cost associated with that, so I didn't budget it. Traveling per GM is going to mix with my training. We want to increase our training. I'd like to have two full-time animal cruelty investigators and one dangerous dog investigator. Plus, if I have turnover, every officer has to have a 40-hour certification. Plus, I require that they have a euthanization. So right there is a thousand dollars in training just for those two certifications. Utilities, I didn't budget for water. The reason like we came up for the BA a little while ago is there was a $7,000 impact fee when we first started, when we got the water. That was why one of our budgets were behind on that. Some other charges, I never budgeted for medications. So there's a cost with all that. So I'm just asking for $5,000. Off the supplies, I just budgeted a little under. I'm just asking for another $500 in the operating supplies. It's just for traps, leashes. We've learned that dog treats is the greatest way to capture an animal. So we do go through them quite a lot. But that is what we're asking for in our new budget.
David, what, how are we addressing in the animal control when we get a call from the city of Lake City? Have we done anything? Have the city made a, a move on letting us pick up that, responding to their calls in the city? How are we handling that now?
So we did establish a protocol for mutual aid where if certain people in the city call us, we will respond. If they can't respond, I think, Joel, you correct me, it's the county manager or the city manager, the fire chief and the police chief. If they call us and say we got a problem, we'll come out and respond. We work with them on a regular basis. But again, if the animals in the city, it's their responsibility. If they call us for assistance, we're happy to respond.
How often we get called for assistance?
That's a Tom question.
We get very seldom. Being they don't have a certified officer right now, they cannot issue a citation in City Lake City. So if it was a dog bite or something of such, we would actually have to go out and assist them. And we would have to issue the citation because they don't have an officer on staff that's certified at this time.
And the city has approached us about wanting to contract with us to provide their animal enforcement. It's kind of a double edged sword. If they pay us to provide their animal enforcement, then they're not paying the Humane Society, which means the Humane Society is losing more money, which means then the Humane Society is going to come to you and ask for more money.
How are they losing more money when they ain't doing nothing? That's the craziest thing I've ever heard.
The Humane Society, I think, 190,000 a year?
No, 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 no. Let's call it like it is. They, they, who's not certified? This, the city?
Yeah, they do not, at this time, they do not have a certified officer.
The city or the animal shelter?
The animal shelter.
Okay. So the city doesn't have an animal enforcement department? They contract with the Humane Society. So the city pays the Humane Society to provide the service.
Now they have someone tasked as their officer. He just does not have his certification. They could still go out, get the dogs and roaming at large, any type of that. They just can't issue a citation.
Okay, so are they picking up every?
Oh, they're picking up dogs. They do everything. They can do all that. The only thing they cannot do is issue the citation.
Okay, so my point is, David, they're paying, the city's paying them for that service. So if we do that service, I don't see a shortfall on their end of the bucket.
Well, what would happen is the city would pay us and not pay them. And then they're going to say, we've lost that revenue.
So they're going to want more, they're going to want more to take care of the dogs that they take up.
I understand, but that's not what the city's paying them. The city's paying them for the same thing we're paying them for, animal control enforcement. You know, it's, it's, it's a.
If, if the board recalls, you previously paid all in with the Humane Society. And then a couple of years before we started enforcement, they split it up to animal services and animal control.
Right.
Sounds like the city might have to do the same kind of analysis. Because again, housing the animals after they're picked up, that is something we do eventually shuffle off to the Humane Society, a lot of that care and services. And so that is, but Commissioner Murphy's exactly right. They're doing just like y'all did a few years ago. They're paying for everything to be provided. And if we're going to start filling the animal enforcement role, there's going to need to be a division of that money from the city side. So Mr. Kraus and I are trying to work out a meeting with Clay Martin, one of the new attorneys that's working with the city, as well as some of the city personnel. This could be an issue that we, we could bring up with them, how they'd like to handle this.
Yeah, we need to clean this up. Yeah. Go ahead, sir.
That was all I was asking for right now for my budget. Okay?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Tom. I think you did a good job.
Yeah.
Where's Steve? Steve? Utilities?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Councilmember or Commissioners. The utility budget that I'm presenting this morning may very well shatter throughout the year depending on the circumstances of the utility authority. We don't know what is going to play out in the next few months, but as it stands today, this is what my recommendation or what I'm asking to get be approved. We're going to have to have some repairs done in Fort White Repair and Maintenance System. There's some carbon down there at that plant that has to be replaced at the water plant. And so I'm asking for 25,000 for this year for some maintenance increases to handle some gauges and stuff that's deteriorated down there. I've shown some increases in Mason City that was not budgeted last year. We do do sampling and testing in Mason City, and it was never budgeted. So that money therefore has been coming out of other water treatment plant funds. The Ellisville Sewer System is going to need some professional services to look at. Everything we've done to date is we've looked up top. We've said, well, let's expand the plant. So we're going to expand the plant. We're looking at taking over FDOT's plant. They're going to ask us to put a pipeline in. They're going to give us the money to put the pipeline in. But what we're missing is our underground network. We have not looked at our underground network for the last, how many years sewer's been in? Five, six, seven, eight years? And it's a four inch main. So we got to do some analysis on that four inch main to see that there's any growth that's happening in Ellisville that sewage can be taken care of through that main. And it requires some professional services. So I've increased the services on that. Bringing on, getting into the new plant that David talked about earlier for the, for the mega industrial park. That plant's scheduled to come online, start up April 2025. So within your budget, you will see some operating utility systems and repair and maintenance. There will be some training that's going to have to be done at that plant as well as a certified operator will be needed. The current certified operator is six hours a day in Ellisville. The new plant coming online is going to require six hours a day. So we're going to need an operator, a certified operator, not a trainee. It's got to be a certified operator to maintain that plant out there when it starts up next year. So these are some of the things that, that I've asked in the budget in, on this. Other than that, it's just status quo, in-house testing. Most of the budget remains as is. It's just a little bit of increases to cover these networks. And there is some, one thing that is, there is some capital that you'll see in the budget for a replacement electrical panel at a lift station in Ellisville that's deteriorated to the point it has to be replaced, as well as the bar screen on top of train number one that's been down there for five years. Wastewater is completely, is, is very corrosive and it's deteriorated the bar screen to the point it's not removing the grit out of the, out of the unit. So that's some of the capital that I've outlined.
Questions, comments?
Like Steve said, this is going to be somewhat fluid as we move forward with the DOT project in Ellisville and future expansions. We're hoping for a lot of grant funding.
I did put a grant in for, for a new plant.
Okay. All right, thanks, Steve.
And at some point, we'll need to fund the utility authority a certain amount of money depending on what it's going to cost them their first year of operations. They will hit up both Swanee and Columbia County as part of this budget cycle.
On the, let's, let's go back. On the Fort White Repair and Maintenance, what, what was that on, Steve?
As far as some, there's some material down there, some motors down there that operate the carbon system that's not operating. They got to get those on. We got to replace the carbon this year as well. That's done every two years. It's been about two years, so it's due for replacement.
Will it require carbon once we get the water from Ellisville?
Well, that's, right now, until that gets put in, the, the plant, if North Florida's here, I'm not sure if they are, the current permit shows our water going through the plant. And, and I, during one of the last meetings I had with them, I requested that it not go through the plant, that it go straight to the ground storage tanks to become a booster station.
That's what I understand.
And that's, that's where I'm leaning towards. That's where it should go. Because our water's been treated. There's no sense in it going through the plant. Now, if we can get that worked out, then that carbon money goes away.
Okay.
It's just I don't know at this point, you know, what, we don't know Fort White's in with us, we don't know if Fort White's not with us, we don't know what's going on with, at this point with anything.
All right, okay.
We're all standing by like everyone else.
And a lot of those decisions will be made once the pipeline is finished.
Yes.
And when's the anticipated completion date?
December.
December?
Yes, sir.
December. We feel very comfortable, we'll be through in five months, which is, I guess, pretty close.
They're halfway down 18 now.
Oh, they're moving, they're moving right along.
We're ahead of schedule.
They're starting to fill with water. They're starting to pressure tests here pretty soon.
Yeah, they are definitely moving a lot quicker than we expected.
And we do not subsidize whatever the word is, that $25,000 a year to Fort White no more, correct? That has.
The third and final payment was what Joel presented to the board last week, and that's what's still in contention.
Okay, right, got you.
Here, here's, here's my concern. And I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that it's moving way quicker than we thought it was going to run. We going to be at Fort White and we don't have an agreement with anybody. We just got water ran there, and we don't have agreement at Fort White on the master meter, how much we going to charge or anything.
Well, we do have a, we do have a quote or a proposal from an engineering firm for a rate study. And so it's being discussed as we speak to look into a wholesale rate for the town.
Okay.
And DEP is well aware that our possible completion date is December, correct?
Uh, yes, and we're meeting with DEP and Commerce both on Friday.
Okay. And that's definitely going to be a discussion.
That'll be in Tallahassee, in their offices.
All right, okay. Stas, you going to be there? He's my, he's my tape recorder.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Long stay. Clint Pittman?
Clint said he didn't need any more money.
Y'all must have talked to a different one.
Hey, that's another Clint.
That was another Clint?
Mine's actually going to be short and sweet, and it actually is very low compared to what it has been in the past.
It is.
But we're, we're sailing along pretty good here. The couple increases you will see in my budget this year are some of the things that, you know, that we can't control, like we talked about earlier. You can see the overall from last year to this year is only a $10,000 increase. And those fall under line items of equipment replacement and our contractual services, which are both things that, you know, we don't have any control over. Contractual services is simply because the cost of those materials, you know, for, you know, insect and pesticide treatments, there's a huge increase in some of those chemicals. I have met with contractors. We're trying to adjust the scope of work so that we can minimize that as much as we can. But in order to continue to level the service to keep our fields and all in good shape, we are going to have a $4,000 increase for our chemicals. Under an equipment replacement, we're running pretty steady on that. If y'all look back at my budgets over the past years, anywhere from 150 to $200,000 is kind of consistent. And all that fluctuates with the type of equipment we're replacing. You know, a lot of this turf equipment, specialized equipment, so it's not like you can just run down to the local dealer and get that piece of equipment. We're seeing huge setbacks on some of that. To give you an example, as of this week, a machine that I ordered, which is a very common machine, it's a bunker rake to do the infields with. We ordered it last year, and I was told this week we're not going to get it until the beginning of 2025. So some of this equipment, you see this cost up there, but I'm actually not getting this equipment year and a half to two years after we're actually doing it. So with that being said, that's where the $10,000 comes in for the increases on that. So with that being said, that's where the $10,000 comes in for the increases on that. This slide, y'all see it every year during my budget presentation, this is our vessel registration that we do every year. You know, we get money back from the state when people go down there and pay for the boats or their, you know, whatever they register under vessels. Now, this money is earmarked, you know, it can only be used for certain things with boating improvements and such as that. You've heard me say over the last couple of years, we have currently a capital project with some erosion control and boat access at Riveride Boat Ramp. So we've been very fortunate, we're holding onto this money for that project. Hopefully that'll be started before the end of this budget cycle, but dealing with permitting issues and third-party agencies, that doesn't move real fast, so. But I wanted to show you that money because that does roll forward and reoccur every year, so that you're aware that what it is and what it's earmarked for. That's the explanations that I just went over a minute ago on the two line items for the $10,000 increase in my overall budget. And then this is the equipment. I always try to give you all an explanation every year for the equipment so you can kind of see what I'm doing. You know, there's basically only five pieces that that includes this year, and you can see on here, you know, we're replacing stuff that's 10-plus years old. We try to get as many years out of it as we can, but because of the heavy use of it, I mean, we just get to a point where you can't patch and piece it anymore. So that's what we're looking at. And I got a note on there, this does not include the lease program, which I've been working with Mr. Kirby and Mr. Kraus and Erica, you know, to make sure we're all up and on board with what it's going to take financially for our lease programs, and they'll discuss that further as we, as we go through the budget cycle. As Commissioner Williams mentioned earlier, you know, the changes, the stuff that we don't see that we've got to budget for, just so y'all are aware, you'll see not so much this year during my capital projects, but in the next couple of years. We all know we have infrastructure and stuff that's permanently in place. You know, we're adding community center in the South Indian County. You know, we've got other properties that we've added, new construction that's going on, so all these things are going to take the maintenance side of it from my aspect. But I want y'all to be aware that the stuff that we currently have, such as playgrounds, that's the big, big key factor, those things have a life expectancy just like everything else. So when we talk about capital projects versus what I would consider repair and maintenance, over the next few years, you're going to see some larger chunks of money that's brought up during the budget process because we either keep them in service and replace them, or we take them out of service. So when we talk about capital projects, sometimes those monies are things that we currently, infrastructure that we're using right now, so it's stuff that we're going to have to address to replace, you know, down the road. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Clint, not a question concerning your, 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 your presentation. Where are we, and I say we, we've all contributed to it with the boat ramp and hamburger lake.
Oh, you're talking about the fishing pier and all that?
Yeah, you mean the pier. Yeah.
Yeah. There's, there's been several talks with game and fish. I think they're still, last I heard, they're still in the permitting phase of that, but I would have to circle back to FWC to see exactly where that stands. And David, you may have update on that?
Well, no, I mean, I talked with Mr. Hudson the other day, and I think I've talked to Commissioner Murphy on it as well. We gave them the money. It was their baby, they were going to rock it. And like you said, they're still working on it. They have not gotten through all those permits and stuff.
That, that project is still in the works, but I just, I'm not sure what, I haven't been involved since last conversation about permitting on that.
Clint, Clint, how much is a bunker rake now? Just curious.
The first ones we bought when we took over the ball fields, were right around $11,000. They're currently $33,000.
No kidding.
So, and like I said, that
That's great.
That specialty type of equipment, you know, you're very limited to manufacturers on where you can get that stuff, and the availability side of it, sometimes you have to swap in order to keep from waiting two years, so.
But $33,000, wow.
Most, most, all of that equipment has more than doubled, some of it is pushing the triple mark from what it was when we first got into the ball field business.
I remember when I almost got impeached out there when we spent $8,800 on the first one. But the, I appreciate it, Clint, you've done a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clint. Chair, real quick, while the next, who's coming up? Donnie?
Yeah.
What I know about the pier, I shared this with Dave the other day, the city, the biz came back in the first go-around, nobody bid on it, on the pier down here. Sent it out again, changed some specs on it, they got a bid. There's question, to my understanding, on a capable subcontractor, if you want to say. So I don't really know where it's at. I do know that the community and a couple of the commissioners counseling are working with the city to try to at least go ahead and let's get the fence up to control the, you know, what goes on after hours there, so. Moving along very slowly.
Okay.
That I know of.
All right. Donnie?
Morning, Board. This is the maintenance presentation for the facility's maintenance department. 2023-24, we had budgeted $1,248,633 and some change. 24-25 request is $1,418,633. Our lines, we are going to need the increases on contractual services, courthouse repair and maintenance, operating supplies, NX repair and maintenance, sheriff admin repair and maintenance, jail repair and maintenance, jail contractual services, recreation, community centers repair and maintenance, and salaries, personal services. The explanations for these increases, contractual services increased $13,000 based on the cost increase of maintenance contracts and added generators to the list. We've got several generators we had to add, we haven't added to the generator maintenance list that we need to account for.
If I may interject, also remember, Board, we're applying for a grant that will add even more generators. So this could go up more significantly than even Donnie currently projects.
We're trying to get some more generators at our community centers, correct?
All of our critical facilities.
For when we do storm.
We, we actually just completed that list, Mr. Chair, last week, this, almost all of our, all of our critical facilities.
And I, you know, that's something that's needed.
Courthouse repair and maintenance increased $10,000 due to expired chillers are no longer under warranty. So the repair and maintenance for the courthouse increased $10,000 for that reason, and the cost is, as everybody's aware, cost of materials is outrageous anymore, it's crazy, but getting plumbing supplies, electrical supplies. Operating supplies increased 5,000 due to the cost of increase of paper goods and cleaning supplies. NX repair and maintenance increases 5,000 due to the cost of increase in materials and annualized. Sheriff admin repair and maintenance increased 2,000 based on the cost increase in materials and actual 23-24 annualization. Jail repair and maintenance increased 10,000 due to the new facility mechanical systems and parts and repairs, labor rates no longer being under warranty. So all the mechanical devices in the new jail are no longer under warranty, so we're asking for an increase to, to manage those repairs. There's a new item, jail contractual services, they increased $60,000 due to an addition of service agreement. We entered to a service agreement for the electronics that, they, try to explain how that works. All the secured doors, the lights, everything that's electronic that's part of the security system, fire alarms, all works out of a circuit hub, and this hub is very costly. So we entered into a service agreement to maintain those components due to the fact that when they, if it goes out, it's, it's high dollar. So the service agreement, I think we, was a good idea. So that, that'll increase for that. Community centers, repair and maintenance increased 5,000, that's due to the increase of materials and actual 23-24 annualized. Salaries and personal services, I put that in increase $60,000 due to that I'm going to request an additional tech three position. The county owns upwards of around 50-something buildings. Our maintenance department touches at least 95% of those buildings, and we can barely keep up with the repairs and, and, and keep these buildings up with what we've got now. So I'm asking for another tech three position so that we can better serve our county employees that occupy these facilities as well as the public.
Questions? Donnie?
I have one question.
Yes, sir. I mean, that, the $60,000 for the jail, for the contract for the electronics, now does that, is that a yearly contract?
That's a yearly contract.
Basically, they'll cover anything that happens out there, $60,000 a year?
For, for that particular system, it will. Yeah, anything, to give you sort of an idea, right now, and I spoke with the contractor that we're in a disagreement with, he stated to me that he will honor the contract with some repairs that's needed now. There's one camera, just the camera, that need to be replaced is $5,000. So that's just one camera, that's just one component of hundreds, that's all part of this one system. So that maintains that whole system, and it's a, it's a, it's a maintenance, a monthly maintenance that they come out, they check everything out, and it's, keep everything Anything else?
Donnie, on the chillers.
Yes, sir.
You were saying that the chillers are out of warranty, that's the last 250s that we bought in previous
That's right.
Those previous years, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Those chillers, if I'm not mistaken, that warranty went out last July.
So did we put both of them 150s in place?
Yes, sir.
We did?
Yes, sir. What, what we got, we got two, two chillers that work, and they, 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 they jump back and forth. Chiller one will work this week, keeps everything running. On Tuesdays, about 8 o'clock, those chillers swap. So you're not running both chillers 24/7. You've got one chiller that runs 24/7 for a week, it swaps over, that chiller remains unused, and it change, it goes to the second chiller, number two, it runs for a week, and it goes back and forth. That way, we ain't burning up one chiller the whole time.
During that time, Donnie, is there a maintenance schedule, something taking place?
Right now, we do have, we have a, a service agreement with Siemens Industry. They come in quarterly, they, they do all the maintenance, they clean the, clean the coals, it's full-borne maintenance to the chillers and the air handlers that's throughout both buildings. As a matter of fact, with, with that, we have a very good working relationship with the technician that works for Siemens that's been taking care of our buildings for 12 years now. And they agree so that to help us out, whenever the air handlers, when they shut them down to, to clean the coals and do all the work with that, they're not responsible for changing the filters. These are, are annual filters that have to be changed. When they do that service, as long as we put the filters in place, they actually change the filters for us as well. So that's something that they do as a service to us, and, and it's, they do a good job.
Great. Any other, Donnie?
Also, just to note, as the Bethlehem Community Center and the Sheriff's Crime Scene Building come on board, that's additional work for Donnie's department.
And the reporter building.
And reporter.
What, Donnie, what is the tech three? I mean, I understand, what, what's their responsibility or job?
A tech three does basically everything. They do some plumbing, you know, some construction work, whatever it takes to change a TV mount, anything that they have to do as far as maintaining or repairing each facility bathrooms, you know, lights, all, everything has to do with maintaining a building, they're responsible. So, yeah, that, that's, they're basically the, 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 the strength behind the system that's not a specifically named position. Say, electrician or, or the HVAC guy, we got a painter, you know, a specific, you know, job descriptions. What I don't have is a plumber, but we'll talk about that some other time.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
I think what Donnie's trying to say is that tech three is the guy that you never hear about, and that's a good thing, because your phone doesn't ring.
Well, you know, in some cases, tech one is a low guy, tech three's a, you know, I was just asking that, but how many, how many employees minus the custodians do you have now, Donnie, in your department?
I think all total is seven.
Okay.
But now, that includes, that includes Ron Rosin, who is full-time at the jail.
Correct.
And that also includes the HVAC specialist, Mike, where, because he's everywhere. And, and just for some information, I keep a tech three, also, he don't spend all his time at the jail, but when Ron gets into situations where he needs help, I have him over there helping Ron keep the jail maintained. And also, one of my tech threes, I have with Mike Gossett, our HVAC specialist, he works with him quite a bit, so, you know, for doing the air conditioning work, which mine, Mike takes care of the ACs, ice machines, they take care of all that. So I, I got a guy that spends quite a bit of time with him as well, that, that I utilize different places other than just sending to each particular building to, to do maintenance. And, and there's also, with those buildings, we have preventative maintenance schedule that we, we keep up, we keep up with all the time, and that takes, that takes up quite a bit of, of time with, with, with staff, so.
Okay. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Pam?
Good morning.
The only female landfill director in the state of Florida.
Thank you. We're going to go into the solid waste budget. Okay, so our 23-24 budget for the current year is $3,47,000. We're actually going to ask for a decrease this year of $2.2 million. That's going to be a decrease of $781,000. Our line item, excuse me, request that we're asking for some increases on line items are contractual services. We're going up $7,800, this in part due to mowing. We're having to ask for an additional cycle due to the increase in rain that we've had this year. It's just going on, on and on. Also, we're asking for a $3,000 increase for our fleet maintenance for our vehicles. We are asking for repairs and maintenance, we're going up $10,000. That due in part to the fleet maintenance increase to our budget that we didn't budget for last year. Leachate disposal, we're going from 310 to 370. That is due in part to age of our cell. We're into our 11th year of cell four, and we've had 35 inches of rain this year, fiscal year alone. With that, it increases our leachate and our leachate cost. And hopefully next year, June, when we go And hopefully next year, June, when we go to the uh have our leachate tanks out of the N M F I P or whatever that is. Um we won't have as much of a cost with that. We'll be hauling it locally instead of having it transported out to Jacksonville. Um contractual services in central landfill, um we're going up um 3,100. That in part is due to our contractual mowing. That's um the explanations um for landfill. So but be reminded that the $781,000 decrease that I'm asking for, we are a landfill enterprise fund. And we those monies are earmarked for landfill. They have to be used for that. They need to be put into our escrow for our future sales. As you know, we're getting ready to build a new class three. Um that'll be in three years. We're already starting in-house excavation now as we speak. They're out there doing today the borings for the for that to make sure everything's good. Um so that will um be needed to be escrowed for next year.
Uh Ms. Pam, Mr. Chair. For the for the public's knowledge, what Pam, to ensure appropriate explanation. The landfill stands on its own as an enterprise fund. So what she's referred to her operating budget as she indicated, it's very important to capture the solid waste fees at the landfill for future expansion. So that's just for public's knowledge. Be transparent. You always have to escrow your money to ensure it stands on its own before we have to expand.
Any questions?
Any question?
Okay, so we're going to change our hat and we're going to go into mosquito control. Um our mosquito control budget uh for the current year is $173,000. We are going uh to do an increase of $202,000. This is primarily due to a proposed state funding increase from the state. Their increase in tier-two mosquito control programs from a $38,000 a year to $67,000 a year. So we'll be getting some funding there to help offset some of our local costs that the county has to match on that. Um we're asking for um $2,800 and ten cent or $2,810 for contractual services. This is due to the fleet. Um repairs and maintenance, we're asking for a $5,000 increase. That's for the repair cost um that we're have to pay for the fleet. We didn't budget last year. We have to budget this year. On the state side, we're asking uh we're all these are just increases for the new state allocation from $38,000 to set uh the six the $67,000. Um so I'm just putting them in line items where we need those expenses to go. Repairs and maintenance, um operating supplies, gas and oil and chemical. Our chemical cost has just went out of the, as you know, as Clint was talking about, his pesticides. Our pesticides have went up as well, um larviciding and adulticideing. So we are asking for those um increases. Uh for that, um for the new, um so our actual state uh increase is going to be uh $28,418. Where we're going from 38 to 67. Any questions on that side?
Pam, what time what what time of year do y'all start spraying? I mean, I seen the guy yesterday, didn't it?
We just started um last week. Uh we try to put it off as much as we can. We're we try to hold our budget to a six-month, seven-month cycle. It's getting to where the summers start, uh springs start earlier, our summers go longer. So we're we have started as early as February, but we try to start in May if we can. This year, we had to start in mid-April. So and that goes to the end of October, which will go into the next part of next year's budget as well. But yeah, it's usually a six to seven month cycle that season.
Pam, how how many uh counties in our area that still spray from mosquitoes besides us?
Uh around our county area, we are the only one that that sprays. There is Hamilton County. They do just the inside city limits of Jasper. Um Union County does not. Swanee County does not. They contract if they have an event of a storm or something. Around our area, it's just us.
I think that's important, you know.
And with all the disease vectors and stuff and and triple Es and stuff and West Nile, they're getting more rampant. Ticks and all that kind of stuff, which our stuff does help with those if it's in the proximity of where we're spraying, you know, it's needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'll be presenting the Board's expenditure, operating expenditures account for the Board as well as the non-departmental and also the veteran's service. The total operating budget for the Board Accounting Commission for uh fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four was $1,001,074. For uh the requested amount for twenty-four, twenty-five is $1,029,274. For non-departmental, the last year's budget was $743 and for twenty-four, twenty-five, $793. Um in professional services, uh the increase is based on uh year-to-date annualized expenditures and the anticipated use of various specialized firms for consulting, engineering, special counsel and lobbying uh for various county projects. And of course, this account is uh fluid in that the more the projects um that the Board Accounting Commission decides to do during the year um and are initiated, the more the expenditures. And of course, the opposite of of the expenditures um would be true if you decrease those. In communications, uh it increases based on uh actual usage and annual recurring cost of wireless internet and mobility services. Rental and leases uh increase due to actual usage um of expenditures for a copier lease and copiers copies associated with that. And um printing and legal ads uh increase is due to um actual usage. And um paid from this line item are all legal notices required for publication. Um it is anticipated there will be increased publication of notices due to the the addition of a future MSBUs and MSTUs as directed by the Board. Um our operating supplies uh increase due to a simple actual usage. The uh increase, I'm sorry, let me go to the non-departmental. Um the non-departmental increase, there was only one increase in this budget and that's for general insurances. And um we basically um have uh found out that our insurances for um auto property, workers' comp, general liability insurances is going to increase. So that was the increases for that. And the veteran's service budget. The operating will go from um twenty-three, twenty-four budget, $16,050 to the twenty-four, twenty-five requested of $20,650. There's only two uh line items that we increased and those uh line items are the communications and utilities. In last year's budget, it was not uh funded. It was an unfunded budget uh item for veteran's service um due to the relocation of the building uh facilities from Extension Office to the McFarland Building. And so uh communications uh expenses uh will will be required for recurring expenses of Comcast lines, uh internet and fax lines and phones. Uh utilities is a basic um water and sewer for city utilities for the building. And that concludes my presentations. If you have any questions.
I'm good. I appreciate it. Yeah, it really looks like all of the [inaudible] are really doing their best to keep the budget in control. I say I I appreciate what y'all doing. I know y'all work hard on this. Oh, I'm really set here. Thank you. I I can't believe it's this low, what you're asking for. What we know with the economy and everything else happens, they say, I just want to meet y'all, doing a great job with this budget.
Thank you. We appreciate the commission and of course, our county manager and our assistant county manager. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh Kirby?
Okay, good morning again, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'll be presenting public work for you. And um, Mr. Ford, as you indicated, we are trying to streamline our budgets. So public works. So you're currently at thirteen point eight. I think we're going to have to go to around thirteen point nine when it's all said and done. How did you get there? Basically, equipment and a guardrail contract. I'm going to show you some savings on equipment, but right now, the significant changes, you've got four new motor graders coming on board. So your principal interest changes a little bit, and I am designing to add a guardrail contract at $100,000. As we're growing, traffic increases, we're bumping in a lot of guardrails. So right now, when you bump into the guardrail, you have a liability situation. And it it's kind of comes from getting the contractor and whatnot. So I want to establish a guardrail contract. Once again, you got forty graders, you got a rail. What equipment? Here's where your savings is versus last year. We spent about $682,000 last year. As Clint Pittman indicated earlier. On the operations side of things, I think guys do a real good job at streamlining equipment. We are looking to get another what I call a brush cutter, the little squatty machines goes around. As Mr. Williams has always indicated, we've won in every district. We're getting there. A good snack trailer, mini excavator and a bucket truck for $666,521 versus the uh $682 last year. So at the end of the day, I think you're going to be somewhere around $100,000 or $14 million operating. Without a subject, any questions, Mr. Chair? We tried to streamline.
I seen a paving machine on that.
Sorry?
I seen a paving machine.
I heard about one one time.
Huh?
I heard about one one time.
Hey, are you in the paving business?
I I heard of it one time in my life. Yes, sir.
Well, I just happened to see it.
Okay, thank y'all, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board.
Uh, thank you, Kevin. Uh uh David, let let's discuss uh with the Board our conversation we had yesterday concerning the building, building department in its spectrum.
Okay, um they'll be at your next presentation. The building department's running into a situation where as of May first, you've now instituted those permits for driving permits. That's going to take a lot more inspections, a lot more time. State law has changed where they're forcing um rapid turnaround on permits. And it's going to really push the capacity of our existing staff to be able to meet those two demands.
We we are with with the changes in building inspectors and and the uh I I do not think that the the building construction was slowed down. Uh uh we're getting bigger buildings uh to uh be inspected. Uh hopefully, when our industrial park with Ellisville and and the mega site uh will really kick off. Uh it takes about seven months to hire a building inspector, if you hire one then. And if we wait until the last minute to the the worst thing and uh well, everybody, it's amazing, all of us in construction. Uh the worst thing that is, the waiting on a building inspector. I mean, you shut down completely. If he don't come inspect it, he tied up with with so much work, uh he just caused this chaos in our sense of speaking. And I told David yesterday that I was going to I tell the Board about this situation and and see if we need to based on what we're looking at in the future to hire, to try to hire another building inspector.
Realistically, a good building inspector will generate fees to help pay their salaries. It's it's the better the economy, the more they're building, the harder it is to find these people because they have to be certified contractors. And if they're certified contractors, they're probably building buildings, not becoming inspectors.
What what y'all what what y'all think about that?
I agree with you a hundred percent, Ron. I mean, just being proactive again, you know, we're reaping the benefit of uh and one of the things that Donnie brought up is is, you know, me and him got our own little joke, but it's exactly right because these type of trade people, these type of building inspectors, is is we need to be proactive. And then you sit there and say, well, they get they're they may get slow and, you know, choose riding with each other. Well, that that that's true. But on these type of professions, uh they're they're becoming few and far in between.
Yep.
There's not many people standing at the uh, you know, down here at the workforce thing in the mornings trying to get a job being a traffic light technician, you know, because they uh they're they're uh they're in high demand. And it's just it's just a part of life they were living on. But 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 David, you said something that kind of sparked me a little bit there. Uh nothing you did wrong, but the state is putting this request on us for to expedite these things.
Yes, they passed legislation this past year.
Correct. And but at the same time, we know what we are going through right now. That just happened in the last week about senti tanks. And now we got a man coming to the business county in north central Florida twice a week. I think we need to address when y'all in Tallahassee, might need to make one more appointment and go over there and talk to them people because that is not right.
Murphy, we've been dealing with that now for five years almost, four years.
Yeah.
And it's hadn't gotten any better. Now they're now they're talking about bringing the people from other counties to public county.
Exactly. I mean, it it just, you know, you talk about slowing down the process. My, you know, my son's doing a project in Swanee County right now. He just waited. I mean, they poured concrete like this week. It's three months to get the field perfect. You know, now I'll give it granted. In defense of Swanee County, they got one poor fellow over there busting his butt and he's got a helper. It, you know, but Swanee County, they they got their growing pains also. So, you know, not not knocking Swanee County, they're doing everything they can. But that reiterates exactly what I'm saying. These type of people that are in these professions are in high demand. And uh, you know, we just, we got to bite the bullet.
Yep.
But this senti tank thing is crazy, people. It's crazy, you know, and uh.
If you did a senti tank permit in a Lakewood County in three or four months, you've done great. That's no no exaggeration.
That's crazy. That's absolutely crazy.
And I and I'm afraid this thing's going to happen here.
Yeah.
Because of the same rule.
Yep.
And we do know that within the next two years, septic tank permits are going to be transferred to DEP.
Yeah.
Well, David, on your on the on the next agenda, you put that item on the uh on the agenda for approval for going out to advertise for a building inspector. All right, anything else, Boyd?
Good. I need to get to an appointment with my.
Yeah, uh let the rep reflect that uh Mr. Hollenworth had a prior engagement is why he's not here for this. Okay? Or anything else? Anything else? Motion for adjournment? All right, we adjourn.